Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. My colleagues on council, city manager, city staff, city attorney. And we have with us tonight our deputy city clerk, Ms. Ashley Hill.
Hello, and please.
Madam clerk, would you call the row, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugo?
Present.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker is absent. And Mayor Glover?
Here. And before I turn the meeting over to our interim city manager, I want to remind my colleagues, it looks as if we have a full agenda at this work session. So if we could get through the presentations with the presenters and then let them go, once they complete their presentation, we can certainly open the floor for questions. But in the interest of time, I would just like us to go through the presentations. And once each presentation is done, then we can open the floor for everyone. Is that acceptable to all?
Yes.
Thank you, then. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and members of Portsmouth City Council. The first presentation we will have this evening is by Mr. Jeff Kramer, employee for the City of Portsmouth that oversees the Community Development Block Grant. Mr. Kramer will be presenting an overview of the 2024 proposed CDBG budget. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Kramer.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, city council members. I'm Jeffrey Kramer with Planning Department. I'm the Community Development Manager. And I will be talking about our 2024 Community Development and Planning Program, our proposed budget for the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program. These are both programs that we receive annually from HUD. And the funds are allocated and budgeted through an annual action plan. The city prepares the actual annual action plan detailing how the resources will be used to implement the goals outlined in the five-year consolidated plan. And fiscal '24, which is the year that we're talking about, is the fifth year of the five-year cycle of the five-year consolidated plan. So this is our CDBG entitlement that's been announced for fiscal '24. It says 1.5.
Excuse me, Mr. Kramer? I'm sorry, sir. The city manager has a question or something.
Will you bring the microphone a little?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So the fiscal '24 allocation is a little over 1.5 million. And it's roughly the same amount that we got last year. It's about a $5,000 difference. And we had requests for $3.1 million of CDBG funding. This gives you a brief overview of CDBG, the eligible activities, which include public services, which is a broad range of activities, childcare, healthcare, job training, recreation programs, education, public safety, fair housing, energy conservation, drug abuse counseling. This is limited to 15% of the annual allocation, which is roughly $231,000 of this fiscal '24, plus 15% of program income that's receded in the prior year. The next broad category of eligible activities is admin and planning, which are things related to carrying out the CDBG program, along with studies, analysis, and those kinds of things. And it's limited to 20% of the annual allocation and 20% of the program income receded in the prior year. And then everything else is sort of lumped into project uses. And these are largely sort of bricks and mortar kinds of things. You can acquire property, you can demolish property, you can dispose of it, you can use it for public facilities, infrastructure improvements, rehab, economic development, microenterprises assistance, and, in a very limited case, housing construction. In addition to being eligible, use of CDBG funds must meet one of three broad national objectives, and these are listed here, is benefiting low and modern income persons, preventing or eliminating slums or blight, or urgent needs. And generally, we're working on activities that benefit low and modern income persons. This gives you a review of what was requested this, well, what current funding is in this year for public services, the requested funding, and the proposed funding. And as I said, this is, the services are limited to 15% of the allocation, plus 15% of the program income that's receded this year. That gives us $263,000 of program, of public service money to work with in fiscal '24. And as you can see in the middle column of requested funding, we had about $480,000 of requests. I'll run through these real quickly. These are all services that we've been funding. They were all funded this current year, and they've been funded in previous years. We're proposing funding of the Parks and Recreation Senior Transportation for $25,000, Parks and Recreation Kids Meals for about $63,000, the Youth Leadership for $19,000, the Parks and Recreation Summer Camp Enrollment Fee, that's for the Summer Raise Camp, for $17,000, the Independence Center, which provides services for disabled persons of $25,000, the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, Central Intake of $19,046, four kids homeless hotline of $50,000, and then Department of Economic Development, their Workforce Development Program, a little over $46,000. The next category of activities that we've run down for you showing the requested and proposed funding are our admin activities. And we've included the $100,000 that is being, that will be used by DSS, Department of Social Services, to help them administer the continuum of care activities that benefit the homeless here in the city. And then the other activity of about 200,000, $209,000, is for admin, planning, and fair housing activities. And then the final list of CDBG activities is the, what are the bricks and mortar kinds of activities? And so you can see, we got about $2.7 million of requested funding, and we only had left about 272,000, 900, I'll get it right, $972,000 of proposed funding. And we're proposing funding of 375 for Maplewood Park redevelopment, $50,000 for the Kratic Skate Park, which involves relocation and redevelopment, replacing fencing at the Wilson-Littley Complex of $17,000, improvements at City Park for about $315,000, and then housing rehab by PRHA of, for $215,000. And they do rehab of owner-occupied housing for persons 62 and over and disabled persons. And these other activities, and we were not able to fund, these included another PRHA project where they wanted to do some redevelopment to support their Lincoln Park Project, the Wesley Community Center, community room renovation, the Eggleston purchasing of laundry equipment, and then VSH Gosnell Apartments. We were not able to fund those. This is a review of the home entitlement. We have, as I said, $510,998 there, and it was about a $46,000 increase from this year. And we had $501 of requests. And this is the proposed funding. Just briefly, home is very housing-centric in the, funds must be used to support housing activities that benefit low-income households. And low-income households are those that have annual income at or below 80% of their median income. And activities broadly include construction, rehab, and tenant-based rent assistance. And we've proposed funding of a little over $179,000 for tenant-based rent assistance by four kids, down payment and closing assistance by the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission is budgeted at about $255,000. And then with home, you have to set aside annually 15% for what's known as a CHODO activity. And a CHODO is a community housing development organization. And that's 15% of the allocation, which is the $76,648. And there's no specific activity at this point for the use of those funds. And this is just the next steps here. We'll do public hearings on the budget on April 11 and 25th, and then it'll be adopted on May 9th and submitted to HUD on or about May 15th, so we can start the program year on July 1. This program runs on the fiscal year, the city's fiscal year, July 1 to June 30. And I can take questions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thanks for the brief. Just one question. I'm on page six of the slides, which is the Community Development Block Grant Administration and Planning. I wonder what that $308,000 buys?
So that's money for overhead that comes up through the year. We probably won't necessarily use it all, but, you know, it comes up for advertising, for doing any plans or studies we may want to do, that kind of thing. And then the rest of it, that $100,000, like I said, is for, we, the Continuum of Care, P-HAC, which is administered through DSS, uses that to engage the Planning Council, and the Planning Council works with administering P-HAC.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, and then Councilman Moody.
Yes, several questions to follow up on the previous question. When you, on page six, when you explained that as, sounds like if you have some type of occurrence to come up that deals with a study or some other type of incidental, is that what this fund is for?
Yeah, and you can also use it for, you know, any planning. We've done, we did a housing study with it. We've done some transportation planning studies with it, that kind of thing through the years.
So if it's not used for that, can it be transferred to another category?
It can be transferred to a non-public service. We're at our public service cap, so it could be moved to a bricks and mortar kind of project.
So this current year, $158,000, and now proposed $208,000. So if we're uncertain, what determined this $50,000 increase?
I think it was just a matter of budgeting to the cap to just sort of give us some leeway. I know, you know, an issue that's come up over the last couple of years is things have been, the bricks and mortar projects had been coming in at much higher than what we thought. And so it does provide some leeway there to sort of move some of this money around through the, during the program year to cover up, to cover some of those things up.
So when you say it can be used for non-service items, for example, where would you be?
It would have to go into the category of other projects. We couldn't put it into the public services because we budgeted to the public service cap of 15%.
Yeah, because it just seems like it's so speculative that if we have some type of needs that can be addressed that we know of, it just seems like that's a significant amount that you've allocated there just in case. And it doesn't seem like it's really warranted from what you're saying.
And that's certainly potential, if that's something you want to do.
Okay. And the other, the other item, the Maplewood, can you elaborate on that a little more, page seven?
So that's the, that's the park on Portsmouth Boulevard. I think we also refer to it as Dory Finney or Dorian Finney. And we had budgeted that in, a couple of years ago, and it's sort of gotten stalled right now. When we use federal dollars on projects for bricks and mortar, we have to do what's known as a Section 106 review. It needs to be reviewed by the State Office of Historic Preservation, which is in Virginia DHR, Department of Historic Resources. They reviewed the project, and they raised the concern of the potential for archaeological resources on that site due to that building, the Olympia Sports Club, which was at one point a Rosenwald School. And so because of that, we've had to, we've done an arc, a phase, what's referred to as a Phase One Archaeological Study. And I believe we're probably going to have to do the Phase Two Archaeological Study. And therefore, this project's not moving forward. We've moved some of that money to other, to cover overages on other activities. And so now we've put some more money there to hopefully be able to start it within the next fiscal year.
Okay. And then my last question. Last budget season, there was quite a bit of discussion about services that were being provided for, I believe, under the home project, assisting persons with down payments. And those services were located in Chesapeake. And there was supposed to have been some efforts to centralize those activities here in Portsmouth. Has there been any movement on that?
Madam city attorney, I mean, madam city manager, would you address that?
So in the next presentation, we will have the administrator for the home program to provide some information. So I don't want us to get too far, but she'll be here to talk about that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's all.
Councilman Moody, and then Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Well, my question to Mr. Kramer is a little bit similar to Councilman Whitaker's in that, that 308, almost $309,000 is not for anything specific. And when I look at Eggleston Services, and I see zero there, and I'm curious as to what determines who makes the cut and who doesn't make the cut. Can you shed some more light on that?
Sure. So the 308 does include the $100,000 that's going to go to help us administer our homeless programs. So, you know, we're really talking about the 208 outside of that. The Eggleston, so we've got two projects under agreement this year with Eggleston. And they've really had, they've been going through some staff turnovers, and they really haven't advanced any of their projects, either of their projects that are in this year's budget. And so I think we came to the decision that it's probably best to just sort of let them sort of regroup themselves before we take on more of their activities. You know, it's important for us to use the money on a timely basis, and I think it's, you know, just probably not the best, next year's probably not the best year to be funding them.
So there may be the influx as far as their management? Is that what you're saying?
Well, there's a couple of things. So I know that their CFO, there's been a turnover in their CFO, and then the person who was actually managing the programs for them on a day-to-day has left, and I don't think they filled that position. And so I've gotten several emails from them about, you know, well, we're having problems with this and that. And so they just, like I said, neither of their projects this year had moved forward at all. They have not, they have not come to us for any reimbursements or, you know, so as far as I'm aware, they really aren't doing much of anything right now.
So they didn't demonstrate a need in the application process?
They, I think when you ask people about need, they'll tell you they have need. But it's one thing to have need, it's another thing to be able to manage it. And it just doesn't appear that they're managing it very well right now.
So we have enough insight to know how well or how ill well they're managed?
Well, like I said, they've had a turnover on the CFO, and the CFO has not gotten me any of their reimbursement requests for this year. There've been several emails from him and some other people there saying they're having email problems, and they can't email them to me, even though they're sending me an email to say this. And then there, so that to me is, it sort of indicates a problem. And then the person who runs the programs on a day-to-day is not there, and I think there's just a temporary person there. And so without me, you know, necessarily going in and doing some deep dive on the management of the organization, just sort of, my day-to-day with them indicates that, you know, they're probably not the best organization right now for us to put money into until they straighten up whatever their problem is.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Councilman Tillage.
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. Looking at the allocation amount that's listed on page three, the total request, $3,159,000, was wondering how that gets into, well, that's for fiscal year '24 moving forward. How do you accumulate that based on the current year? It's almost doubled. So is that just the allocation amount that's offered every year to run these programs?
That 3.1 million is what was actually requested for in terms of funding. It's not, it's not related to the allocation, it's what was requested from the allocation.
Okay. So the list between pages five and seven is the request?
That's right. So it's broken out by the various categories.
Okay. And I guess my question was similar to my colleagues Whitaker and Moody, the requested funding versus the proposed funding, so through the allocation, through the application process, I guess if they didn't meet criteria, or if it didn't seem like they could manage what was being requested, it was, how, I just, I guess we're trying to determine through the allocation process, who determines that it's being lowered from what was requested?
So it was a discussion with the city manager, the interim city manager, with interim deputy city manager, Mr. Wright. You know, there was a discussion looking at these, looking at some of the performance issues, looking at what, you know, I think we're trying to, to a degree, sort of prioritize city projects versus some of these other organizations' projects. And just sort of some sense of what the reality of some of these projects really are when they come to us.
Yeah, because I guess looking at the Department of Echo Development, Portsmouth at work, the workforce development, seems like they're requesting $150,000, but reduced down to 46. Seems like they could really use that funding because we're always talking about workforce development and funding those. So just wondered how the numbers get reduced to the proposed versus what they actually requested in their application process.
Right. So part of the issue with these public services is, again, it's limited to the 15%.
Okay.
And then I think we did have the discussion of that, and I think it was sort of agreed by Ms. Terry that, that they, we can, the city can probably come up with some other funding for them. You know, I think it's all agreed that it's a good program, and it's very well-used, and that the city can probably make up some other money for it. But unfortunately, it has, because of the nature of that program, it needs to get lumped into these services that are limited to the $263,000.
Yeah, okay. And then last question. I know that I spoke previously at a former meeting, I don't know if you saw the presentation or heard about it, but Senators Kane and Warner allocated $98 million to Virginia cities, and there are seven cities that received a portion of that. And Portsmouth is getting roughly $2 million of that funding allocation. So I know it probably hadn't arrived to you yet. Well, we were in DC this week, the last four days, for the National League of Cities Conference, Congressional Conference, and we were able to speak to staff persons in Senators Warner and Kane's office. And we were just trying to see, you know, what that funding comes down to and how it gets allocated. So it looks like it may be allocated to your department rather than the city to use for low-income housing disbursements. You haven't heard about it yet?
No, I don't know.
Okay, I'll forward the email to, the city manager may not have arrived to us yet, but I did receive an email a couple of months ago, and there was $98 million that was allocated to Virginia localities, and seven cities got a portion of that money. Okay.
Councilman Hugo, I mean, Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. So on the home projects, on page nine, for the tenant-based rent assistance and admin for kids, I see that they requested $174,840, and we're proposing a little bit more than that. Has a conversation been had with four kids when it comes to the need of funding for this program? Because over the last couple of months, I've received quite a few phone calls for the lack of rental assistance programs for residents of Portsmouth. With rent being as high as it is, people are seeking help. And I had a conversation with a couple of people, but also with the executive director of four kids. And they ran out of funding. I guess they go from like a March-to-March funding, and they ran out of money for Portsmouth, she said, back around Thanksgiving. So for like the last four months, they haven't been able to help folks from Portsmouth.
Right. So they are actually, it's sort of like, it's, the answer to that question is, well, they, I see what, I understand what she's saying, but they are actually still providing rent assistance. So with that $179,000, what will happen is they'll work with, so they'll work with, you know, a number of households and pay their rent over several months, usually six to 12 months. And so that limits their ability to take in new people. So they still have money that we have under agreement with them, that they're still paying people's rent, but they can't take on new clients at this point until we have more money available to them. And, yeah, so we know it's a struggle with them, but, you know, so we're just trying to balance out what we can, what we can give them out of $510,000, knowing that we have to set aside 15% for a CHODO activity, and that we also want to continue, you know, using money for the down payment and closing. It's been a successful program also. So, you know, those are the choices that you have to make, though, you know? If you want more rent, then you have to figure out where it's going to come out of the 510 or some other resource. But, you know, that's what we're working with here. And, you know, so, yeah, I understand the rent is a problem. And it just, unfortunately, we just don't have the resources to take care of everybody's rent that probably needs it.
So the $510,000, that's based on a formula that comes down from the federal government?
Correct.
Okay, so would it be, or could it be appropriate if council was, were to, I guess, take money from, reallocate money to add to this fund or add to your department to be able to provide additional assistance? Because I understand what you're saying, where, you know, they're paying six, up from six to 12 months of somebody's rent. But, I mean, six to 12 months of somebody's rent, but, I mean, with rent right now being 1,500-plus, I mean, that's maybe, they're helping maybe 10 or 12 families a year.
Right.
And we have 28% of our citizens living at or below poverty. So I guess that'll be a conversation for council to have as we move forward with budget season.
Yeah, just to interject, you know, the way the program is, it's by doing that, they work with the people then to help them become stable and sort of work through what the issues are that are preventing them from, that are causing them to have this problem. And so it takes that time period. I think what they found is, unfortunately, if you just give someone money for rent for a month or two, that takes care of that month or two, but you're not getting through, you're not working through the other problems that result in them not being able to afford their rent. And so hopefully by working with them through that period, you know, with a caseworker providing them with services, they can become stable, and then it allows four kids to move on to some other households.
Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kramer, on page nine on the CHODO, the $76,645, or $48, I'll get it right in a minute. We're required to have a CHODO organization, is that correct?
Well, you're required to have the money set aside and hopefully have a qualified CHODO that has the capacity to do it. We have worked with Habitat for Humanity of Southampton Roads. It's just a very fast-paced and aggressive real estate market right now that makes it harder for them to be able to compete.
Yeah, reason why I ask, I know at one time, going back, you know, maybe eight years ago, they used that money to rehab and put housing back on the, back on the market and also create the housing for people of need. So is that money, specifically what is the money being used to? Is it going to Habitat or is it?
It's not going anywhere right now because Habitat is having trouble coming up with buying, with being able to find property and to be able to manage it in a way that, the way the program runs is, this is all reimbursable, and we can't, HUD does not allow us to give them money upfront, and the city's policies do not allow us to give them money upfront. And so they have to be able to come in and buy a property and usually pay cash for it and then be able to come to us and we can qualify the project then, and then we can reimburse them. And so it's just, it's very tricky and very, just sort of difficult. They, you know, I talk to them a few times a year and they're looking at property, but they tended to get out of bid or there's issues with, you know, the house itself, you know, the nature of the real estate market is that the better properties usually get bid up and price real fast, they don't have a lot of room to bid up properties. So it's just very challenging for them, and there's just no other organization around here in Hampton Roads right now that has the ability to work as a CHODO, and, you know, so it's just very challenging.
So the money's not going anywhere yet, it's required that we put a minimum of 15% in the fund?
That's correct.
So, I mean, does the money accrue or what?
It accrues for a while.
How much money in the fund?
I don't know right now.
I would like to know.
Right.
I think, I can't speak for my colleagues, I think it'd be good information for us to have. I'm a little surprised that the money's, just we allocating it, it's not doing anything. So if you could get that, Mr. Manager, get that information, I think it'd be good for us to know. And the other thing is, I mean, I take it that's a federal requirement, that 15%?
Correct.
And nobody has taken exception since the house, the real estate market is so strong that either that can be, that money can be used in another manner?
No, no, you know, this is a problem in a lot of communities, you know? $76,000 on paper looks like a lot of money, but when you start to get into development projects, it's not a lot of money. And so it's just sort, when these, so these regulations were written in the early 90s, and the regulations have just never caught up with where we are in terms of trying to do this, and, you know, that's a HUD issue.
How long, how long do you think it's been since we actually used the money for its purpose?
It's been a few years.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Hugel, then Councilman Tillage, and then Councilman Dr. Whitaker.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I want to follow up on where Councilman Moody was going. I assume that as you were looking at prioritizing, you looked at where we stand on actually spending this year's money, and if we weren't spending this year's money, then it's some kind of signal that maybe the demand signal that they're asking for really doesn't exist. And I'll use examples that you gave. So you said Eggleston isn't in a position to use their money, yet this year we funded them $35,000 out of the public service fund and another $50,000 for other CDBG projects. So we have $85,000 budgeted to them this year. Have they used any of it?
They haven't at this point. They haven't requested any reimbursements at this point.
Okay, so if they're headed to not ask us for reimbursement between now and the end of our fiscal year, do we reprogram that money inside here to somebody else that we cut short and give them the money?
It can be, but again, it can't go to a public service because we've budgeted that to the cap, so it would have to go to essentially the bricks and mortar.
The $35,000 of their public service funding could go to another public service project, right?
No.
Why is that?
Because the public service cap is on an annual basis, and you can't roll that money over. So it's 15% of the current year allocation.
Yeah, I'm not talking about rolling it over, I'm talking about taking that $35,000 and giving it to Parks and Rec Youth Leadership. We've got $19,000, and maybe they could use another $35,000 to do some more stuff coming up in the summer. See what I'm saying?
Right.
If we just sit on the money, then the money isn't doing us any good, and to your point, at some point, we lose the money. And I don't want to lose federal money because it ain't our money, it's federal money. So let's spend federal money every time we get a nickel of it.
So that $35,000, if you want to use it at public service, it has to be expended by June 30th of this year?
Great, let's take it away from Eggleston and reapply it next week. See where I'm going? So have we looked at where we stand on spending this year's money?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know where we are on spending this year's money.
Okay, so out of, out of 1.5 million, are we on track to spend it all?
We're not going to spend it all because a lot of it, you know, is into these bricks and mortar projects, and it just takes a while for some of them. I couldn't, I couldn't tell you how much we're going to spend. We're going to spend a lot. We've already, to this point, in this year, we've already spent, you know, so we had old money there, we had program income, we've had a lot of program income over the last few years. So from July 1st, I think we've spent about 1.5, 1.6 million already this year.
Oh, we only have 1.539 to spend.
Correct, but like I said, there's money from other activities that was reprogrammed, plus there was program income. Over the two prior years, we received about $700,000 of program income that gets into these projects. And so that's money that's been part of this also. So, yeah, we've spent in that range of 1.5 to 1.6 since July 1st through, you know, this point.
And perhaps?
So you know I have about 1,000 more questions I could ask, and I'm not gonna, but I will follow up with you to get some more detail here.
And what I just want to say, so you, because I know, I know you well enough to know where you're going. So with CDBG, and we didn't get into that this evening, there are program dollars in the CDBG fund as well as what we get from the federal government. And so what happens is some of those dollars that we get can be rolled forward into the next year. And so the reason that we're before you is basically for the current year, for the, for '24. But remember, those, some of the program dollars from past years have rolled forward, and we are able to increase the budget. So whatever we had from prior years that some could include program funding could roll forward, and so that increases your budget on top of the things that you already have or requested for this year. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, and so when he says we have additional, these dollars plus what's in the current budget, he's just giving you what we have currently, what we're trying to, what we're proposing for '24. Again, this is coming before you because if you have any questions, and again, he has another meeting, I think April the 11th before, to discuss it as well, the public hearing.
Right.
Right, the public hearing. And so he's bringing this for, just for the questions that you have. Maybe there's something that could be reallocated, but it has to stay within the program guidelines. So I think a clearer, or, you know, I could send something out, maybe sit with Jeff a little bit, so we can kind of determine what we have rolled forward, why we can increase these accounting strings or the line items by the money that we get for fiscal year '24, and to ensure that the money is allocated in areas, just like with Eggleston, if there's a project they haven't done, we sat down and we said, I can't continue to give you funding if the project was not finished or you haven't finalized the project in the past, and we can put it somewhere else. So we can definitely take your recommendations of what you may want to see and the programs you may want to allocate some additional funding to. Again, he has to do his public hearing, but again, this was proposed, and we just want to make sure we stick to the criteria allowed to us by the federal government because some things we can't do. But I know where you're going.
Yeah, so, so to the point, got it that there's funding that's available to roll over. Maybe that funding is going to pay for the Lincoln Park stabilization or the Wesley Communities, one of these things that's got zero allocated to it in next year's budget, but they have money left over in the fund that you can roll over and pay. It would be helpful to understand that so that when somebody comes to us and says, hey, we think funding the Lincoln Park stabilization should have been a higher priority, we can say, well, wait a minute, it's okay, it got $0 out of next year's budget, but we had enough rollover money to fund this through this year or last year.
Right.
The rollover, see where I'm going?
Yeah, and also, when, if, we want to kind of, I want to give you something to consider as well. When we talked about the Bernard Griffin Recreation Park, we, remember, these projects have been going on for years.
Right.
And what you only saw was, hey, we need some more funding, but what you didn't see until I presented, we spent $400,000 in the process. And we also dedicated another $15,000 because we looked at the program and we looked at what they could use, and whatever we had left, we were able to allocate it to another program that was necessary for, not fields, but through Parks and Rec, which was allowable. And the whole thing for CDBG money for me is I'm looking at what we can get from CDBG so we can use our dollars for other things. As much as we can absorb from any funding that we get from the federal government, use them first and then come back.
Absolutely.
But I also want, if there's a program here that we can't do the funding for, remember, I will come back to you with some information as to ARPA discussions, if there are any reallocated dollars you want to see. I'll be bringing that discussion back on April, the second meeting in April, because the strategy is to give you everything we have that we can receive funding for so he could get that budget approved, and CDBG, at least we can get the budget approved, get the funding, and then if we need to reallocate, we can. But also to bring you everything that we can get funding for. And then the next process is to look at the budget when we have our budget defense on April 11th for the proposed changes. And then after that, the next meeting will be the strategy to determine, hey, how do you want to fund these things that we can't, and what are we going to do about those? And as well, that's going to be our segue into ARPA. So there is a strategic plan, the reason we're doing it this way. But I wanted to put before you what you have available, so you can keep in mind where we can go or where we can fund those projects that this may not find the funding for.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. So this isn't really a question, but it goes back to Councilman Moody's comment about the community housing development organizations. And you mentioned that Habitat for Humanity was an organization that had been having some issues. The Hampton Roads Community Action Program, HRCAP, they recently reinstated their community development organization. It's called Peninsula Community Development. It's called, Peninsula is just the name, but HRCAP services the entire Hampton Roads region. They even have an office right here off of Airline Boulevard, so that could be a possible development organization, because I just don't want to continue to see federal money just set aside, so, just a recommendation.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, also following up on the home project that Councilman Moody brought up, that definition of community housing development organization, is that federal or local?
That's a HUD, you know, regulation. It's a very specific HUD term and HUD makeup. There's, you know, they have, their boards have a very specific makeup, and there's no other organization outside of a HUD-funded organization like this. It's very specific to HUD.
And so when you mentioned that these funds have been rolling over, how long does the, does HUD allow for them to continue to accumulate?
So we have, there's a couple different things. So you have, right now, they, there used to be a two-year commitment deadline that's been suspended for several years now, which sort of leads me to believe it has to do with this very problem. You have five years then to expend it, and then it goes back to the Treasury, the US Treasury, after, I think it's seven or eight years.
So when, when we were speaking of transferring these funds to other categories, that has to be within the home program, not from home to CDBG?
Yes, and this money in particular has to be to a CHODO organization. That's the only use of this. It can not be used for any other organization, and they need to use the money to develop housing.
Okay, so it can't be transferred to tenant-based rent assistance?
That's correct.
Okay. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I guess my question to follow up on, Councilman Whitaker, if it has to be used to a CHODO organization, who is our organization? And does it have a board of directors?
Yes.
Who, who are they?
Well, like I said, Habitat for Humanity has qualified themselves through the makeup of their board. The board has to be, have very specific makeup, it has to have low-income representation and a variety of things, and Habitat's board qualifies as a CHODO.
But we, we used to have our own organization.
Well, it wasn't our organization, but there was an organization in the city.
In Portsmouth.
Yes.
And we had board members from Portsmouth, as I recall.
Correct.
So, you know, there's a lot of, what I'm getting at, there's a lot of needs out there, and the criteria is benefit, low, moderate income, preventing slums or blight conditions. And, you know, to have us money that we're required to set aside 15%, to have it keep rolling over when there's needs out there, I don't think we're being good stewards to that money in that respect. We need to put the money to work. We, we need to put the money to work. And maybe when, when the city manager comes back with, to let us know how much money we're, we're speaking of, I'd like to know what options are under the CHODO umbrella as far as flexibility. You know, we, we, we have widows and widowers out there that, that we probably cite monthly for falling off gutters and shutters and other repair problems on, on homes that they, they can't afford to fix. And if we can use this money to help that situations, you know, I think that'd be good use of the funds.
Unfortunately, we can't. A CHODO organization has to be a developer and they have to own the project and they have to develop the project. And so you can't just do housing rehab. You know, so we're using CDBG with PRHA to do housing rehab. You can't do that with this CHODO set-aside money.
So you have to buy the-
The CHODO, the CHODO organization has to own the property. They have to be the developer and owner and then they sell it or they rent it or however they, you know, whatever the, the development ends up being, that, that's how it has to be. So, yeah, you can't just do a housing rehab program unfortunately with this CHODO money.
Yeah, along with, when we get back with the amount of funds, I'd like to know the usages, recent usages that we've applied the money to. I think that would be helpful.
Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, I'm fine.
How, how is this informa-, how's this information communicated to the public as far as the CHODO being available? Because you named an organization, Habitat for Humanity's Mr. Tillich named an organization, and I'm always concerned when we're sort of limiting our circle. So how, how is that advertised?
The, you know, so we advertise the whole program and unfortunately, until, until Mr. Tillich told me about HRCAP, I, I knew of them from the peninsula. I was not aware of them working on this side of, in this area. But Habitat is the only organization in South Hampton Roads which has the makeup of its board to qualify as a CHODO at this point. There were other CHODOs, but they've gone out of business. It's a struggle to do a CHODO project given the money situation. And so it's, they're the only ones at this point that do this.
That's probably because they knew about it and that's my concern. How is this being communicated generally that this is out here, this is available? Because if, if persons who have heretofore not known about this, they wouldn't know how to possibly structure that.
So if I can interject, this falls in the line of the home administrator. So when she, when Mrs. Bethay, I would like her to just kind of speak to it.
Yeah, she, she really, that's really not.
But I think you, you would want me to do that.
All right.
Thank you.
Is, are there, are there any other questions for Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kramer. And I did just have one statement. Under the CHODO, I mean, as I understood them from years ago, there are strict rules in terms of putting a CHODO together. And to your point, one of the challenges you have, particularly with private developers or a nonprofit organization, there's just not a lot of resources there for those things to be set up. And in addition to that, it's my understanding, is very strict accounting under a CHODO. You have to meet very stringent guidelines. And the other thing is, if something were to happen to that money in the CHODO, the locality and, and others could be on the hook for those dollars. Is that, is that true?
Correct.
That's what happened in Portsmouth, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's what Councilman Moody's talking about. But I'm, I'll wait for Ms. Bethay.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer, for your presentation.
Okay.
Madam City Manager, you have the floor.
The next presenter this evening is Mrs. Shanita Bethay, Housing Administrator with the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. Ms. Bethay will present an overview of the Down Payment and Closing Cost Program and at the end, if we had some questions that we would like to consider, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Bethay.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you all for having me, Mayor, Mayor Glover, Interim City Manager Terry, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke and Distinguished Servant Councilman. Happy to be here to talk about Come Home to Portsmouth from the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. And as a long-term resident of Portsmouth, this is very exciting for me to be here to talk about a positive program that has been very impactful for the area. Now, I can't speak to the CHODO, but I'll wait to the end if that's okay, if we want to circle back to that if we have time.
Please.
Oops. Can I turn it off? So I really wanted to just talk a little bit about the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, a little bit about our housing and our human services program. Interim City Manager Terry, as well as Mayor Glover, is actually sitting on some other initiatives and programs that we're working on currently for Portsmouth as well as the region. So I'll talk about that a little bit if we have time at the end. And I want to provide a historical background of the, of the Come Home to Portsmouth program as well, as well as giving you an overview of the type of clients that we actually serve with the program. So we have been the administrator of home funds since 1996. Back in 1996, the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level was looking for regional entities in order to funnel money down. What they were finding out is that as they were trying to serve each locality and city, it was just too difficult to be able to ma-, to manage several projects at a city level versus looking for consortiums and other ways of collaboration with the region. So in 1996, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission became the regional administrator of home funds as well as a program called Single Family Loan Fund. So that was 1996 and we were doing low interest rates of about 1% to 2%. I wish we were there today, but it was a very affordable loan product for low and moderate income clients. Since 2016, we have been the administrator of home funds for Portsmouth. I have been working with Jeff and the City of Planning for a long time, but we saw the need to provide this program for the city of Portsmouth. We wanted to be able to move people from rental to homeownership as well as moving people from homelessness to homeownership. So this was a, a great time for us to kind of start the program. We did a small pilot the first year of about $100,000 to see what the performance would be, if we were going to be able to find clients that needed it, and we did in fact do that. We also, at the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, service a regional representation, regional representative for various other programs and services. Two of those other programs, we are looking at a regional adequate housing study. We're also managing a fund from the Virginia Association of Planning District Commissions as well as Virginia Housing in Richmond to provide gap funding for projects throughout the locality. And Portsmouth is receiving funding for that initiative through that grant as well through the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. We also staff support another group called the Hampton Roads Housing Consortium, which is a group of nonprofits, for-profit organizations. All of our housing authorities and all of our city programs also are members of that group. And we meet quarterly to talk about all items that are related to affordable housing. Our next meeting will be April 13th. We're holding that one on the peninsula and we're talking about the state of housing in our area. And we're also rolling out another project called Zoned In where we look at how we look at zoning practices to ensure that we're, making sure that we're in line with bringing new affordable housing. A lot of times when a developer comes to you, some of the major impediments to projects is zoning and code. So we're looking at how we can better mesh those two entities together. So, the home program for Portsmouth. We provide down payment and closing cost assistance to purchases for residents in Portsmouth and anyone who wants to call Portsmouth their home is for first-time home buyers. So this is not a program if you're an existing home buyer or if you've been a homeowner in the last couple of years. We call it a grant, but we technically call it a forgivable loan. And what that does is it allows us to protect the funding. So normally it's a five or 10-year affordability period. And what that means is that the buyer agrees to stay in the home for five or 10 years depending on the amount of subsidy. And what we are able to do is to cover a large amount of the closing costs associated with the program as well as their down payment. So in terms of this program for Come Home to Portsmouth, it is funded from the Portsmouth Home Funds that Jeff just showed in, in his presentation. We are subject to regulations and rules from HUD. So it's not just a client comes to us, they want the funding and we give it to them. We have several manuals of other stipulations, rules and regulations that we have to follow to ensure that the client is compliant as well as the property meets standards. And we work directly with Jeff in the City of Portsmouth Planning. From the beginning of a project, when we open it, he reviews it, he intakes that information. And when we close it, we actually send that documentation in to make sure that we're in, in line. The buyer, these are just kind of the general buyer eligibility and I'm, if this is one sheet, I can show you about three other of other ones, but we want to just kind of highlight some of the major ones. You must be a U.S. citizen or legal resident, no home ownership within the last three years. You must be at or below 80% of the area median income. And I'm going to give you a few examples of what that looks like for the residents. And you must be able to qualify for a first mortgage and have some of your own personal funds. So what we try to do with the program design is, for the amounts that we give, it's up to between $14,000 and $20,000 toward their purchase. And I believe we also gave a copy of the brochures that we have out. The buyer has to contribute at least 1% of their own funds. They have to have some skin in the game for the program. So if they're purchasing, purchasing a house for $100,000, which is really difficult today, but if it was $100,000 for the example, they must have at least $1,000 in this transaction of their own funds. And they are required to participate in pre-purchase housing. That is a first-time home buyer class through Virginia Housing as well as one-on-one pre-purchase counseling before they close. This gives you an idea of the area median incomes for Portsmouth. So for a family of four, they cannot make no more than $74,800. So these are the numbers. They are generally updated each year. These are HUD's numbers, they are not ours. And generally, we have seen them uptick, but it's really kind of depending. Those numbers generally come out March and April, around March and April that we get numbers. What I put together, I think this will kind of bring home what the program's impact is. So we pulled four of our recent buyers that have purchased in Portsmouth. The first one was a family of four. The husband worked a full job at a local, a local Walmart. He had a part-time job on the side and his, and his wife was a stay-at-home mom. We had a single mom with a child. She was traveling and commuting for work almost 30 to 45 minutes and was able to move into the city of Portsmouth and be able to get to work a little bit quicker. So that was a success story for us and a transportation success story when you're trying to move people to, closer to their jobs. My favorite is the single male. He was a Churchland High School graduate a couple of years ago. He entered the apprenticeship program, really did everything he was supposed to do. He was spending a little bit more than what we wanted, but when we kind of urged him into the right direction, he was able to purchase his first home really young. So that was a huge success story and he actually called two of his other first cousins that came back and got in the program as well. So that was a success to show that our young adults are listening and, and able to find employment and to move to homeownership. The last example was a single female taking care of her elderly parent. She was 67 years old and never became a homeowner. So 67 years to say that I am now a homeowner was a success story for us. So that kind of gives a nutshell of the clients that we're looking at. This is a low-to-moderate income program. It is designed for mortgage-ready clients. So that's different from your financial counseling clients or your first-time home buyers that need credit counseling and financial counseling and spending plan development. This program is designed for people that are ready but just need additional funding to kind of get over the hump. What I wanted to show you is where our buyers are. This map just clearly shows kind of that the homeownership is throughout the city of Portsmouth. The larger dots only indicate how the sales prices have increased. We saw this in the last two years. If you look at the 2019, dots are a little bit smaller. We have seen an uptick of affordability in that area, so we're really monitoring that. But it just strategically shows you where the clients are located throughout the city. This is who came home to Portsmouth. So this is kind of a map that shows where the client existingly lived and pretty much that these are the types of clients that have located into the city of Portsmouth. The trend has changed from year to year. In some cases, we see clients that if they were born around Prentice Park, they want to live and stay there because that's their home, that's where grandma is, that's where daycare is, that's where their church is. So we see that a sense of place really matters to people that are in Portsmouth. And what we're trying to do is ensure that they can find affordable housing in each neighborhood within the city and they don't have to travel to other places to feel safe or to have housing that is adequate for their household size and their needs. In terms of the property requirements, that's always a question for us is, are these HUD homes we always hear, are these substandard homes? We are required that those homes go through a housing quality standards inspection. They have to meet all local codes and we require every buyer to receive a whole home inspection, which is different. So that buyer knows ahead of time what they're up against, if there's any deficiencies, then they have the right to vacate that contract and find something that's safe and adequate. We do have to perform a visual LED inspection. Most of our housing stock that is affordable, it was prior 1978, so we are required to do a visual LED. And we have to make sure that within the time that we have allocated, whether it's five or 10 years, that the client is staying in that home and that is their primary residence. So that means that they cannot purchase today and decide to rent that property or refinance it or sublet it. That has to be their primary home. This is the one-man band or the two-woman show. I'm the housing administrator. I take care of most of the other housing programs for the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. Deidre Garrett is here with me. She is the housing specialist and she handles the one-on-one communications with our buyers. Not only do we administer the Come Home to Portsmouth program, we are also the sole administrator of down payment and closing costs for the city of Chesapeake, Alawak County, Smithfield, James City County, Pecosin, Williamsburg and York County. The model that we have come up is a regional collaborative model. So clearly, if you were able to try to do this program in one city, if you look at the amount that we receive, if you take that and you look at the overhead of a, of a office, of staff cost, of overhead and fringe, you would only be probably able to purchase or help one person. If you, you would eat all of your cost up in your overhead cost. Most of our clients come to us from lenders and real estate agents. We do trainings and outreach to our lending partners. And we also do first-time home buyer mortgage-ready classes just to get them familiar with the program. But we partner with HUD-approved housing counseling agencies that actually do the more heavy lifting when those clients really need more hand-holding and more credit counseling. So we wanted to give you, and I know that's a lot of information, I know you all have a lot, but we wanted to give you all that information about the program. I would have an ask from you, because this is something that we always are looking for as ambassadors of the program. We do a lot of mailings out to churches, to other civic groups. We also do mailings out to our libraries, but there's so much predatory lending and predatory information out here that if you are ambassadors to your jurisdictions and your cities, then you all can help us to get the word out because we're still constantly trying to find clients that need it. We know they're out here, but of course, agencies don't have the budgets that the predatory lenders have to do these very distinct focuses. lenders have to do these very distinct focuses. So we look for more people in the communities to kind of spread the word. So any questions? I know that was quick, I know you all have a lot, but I just wanted to give you all an update on the program. And a huge thanks, because when we get someone into home and they're able to close and tell us that they were homeless before, they're a first-generation homeowner, it makes a difference. So we wanted to say thank you for trusting us with the program, but also make sure that all of our members were updated on what we're doing at the planning district.
Ms. Bethia, thank you for the presentation. And is there any questions? Dr. Whitaker, sir?
Yeah. Well, I do have one that I think you can address from the Hampton Roads Planning. The classes that you mentioned, do they have to go to your location or is that online?
So the classes are online. You can go to virginihousing.com and they can actually sit in the comfort of their own home and to attend a class. There are in-person classes that are held throughout the region. Some are also held in Portsmouth. Catholic Charities in Churchland, I was the former program director for that HUD-approved housing counseling agency. They do first-time homebuyer one-on-one counseling as well as classes. But other organizations, lenders, realtors, and nonprofits hold those free classes throughout the region.
Okay. And my other questions are specific to Portsmouth and I think Mr. Kramer, the questions I was asking him initially, they're not going to be answered by Ms. Bethia.
Which question?
I'd rather ask him because he's the one that deals with the Portsmouth program.
Would you like, you have a question for Mr. Kramer?
Yes, for Mr. Kramer.
Okay, Mr. Kramer, please come forward.
Mr. Kramer, the question I was asking you previously was about how we communicate the CHODO. How do we market that? And that's something that your office deals with.
So we just, we generally advertise the program on an annual basis and it, again, there are no CHODOs that I'm aware of in this region other than Southampton Roads, who has been active, who is organized as a CHODO. I've talked to people occasionally who say they want to develop, who want to become a CHODO. I give them information. We have a CHODO manual, a CHODO application form that's given to them. It's a rigorous thing to become a CHODO. And I've never had anyone come back to me and with a completed application. And so, you know, that's where we are with this.
And I can speak to the regional impact of CHODOs. It's not just Portsmouth. So when you look at the amount that you all are rolling over, it's a small amount. Each city is having the same issue. And Mayor Glover alluded to it. Back a couple of years, HUD changed their formula of how they would structure a CHODO. That knocked probably 95% of the CHODOs that were in operation. Most of the time, that nonprofit organization has to have enough capital to be able to have freestanding salaried employees as members. Habitat is not a CHODO. Habitat has a separate arm that they have developed in order to do CHODO activities because there was no need. And the only reason they're able to do this is because they're partnering the structure of South Hampton Habitat together for the offshoot of CHODOs. So I would tell you, every locality is having the same issue because nonprofits just don't have the money upfront, as Jeff alluded, to do these type of projects. We're not talking 76,000, we're talking 1.5 million. We're talking about money that you have to put in. So from a federal standpoint, maybe there's something we can do in terms of lobbying and advocating for a different structure of CHODOs. But in terms of what the CHODO's purpose is, I would tell you it's an issue throughout the region. Some have a few more. The one through HR cap is fairly new, so they're going to have to establish capacity as it relates to revenue in order to do projects, but it's not a quick fix. You can allocate some of your CHODO money to education and some of what Jeff was alluding to. I have taken the CHODO certification, I know the parts of it. If I was to start one, but it's a lengthy process. Unfortunately, most of the people that were CHODOs were our grassroots nonprofits. They were out there doing great work, they were partnering. But unfortunately, until we have some radical federal guideline changes, we're going to probably be in a hole until we get those things taken care of.
My concern is initially, how did these organizations even find out about CHODO?
I don't think it's a question of them finding out. It's a question of capacity that if they're not able to formulate it, that's not a function of the city. That's a function of that organization trying to find a program. NeighborWorks, NRCRC, there's some national companies that formulate and help. But from the role of public outreach, you're supposed to at least make sure that you're reaching out to the ones that are available and trying to staff support the capacity of the ones that you have working within the city. Any other questions about the homeownership program that I can answer?
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bethia. You were so thorough. I think you cut down on the questions that we would have to ask. And one of the questions, because you are a two-man band, thank you all for the work that you do. It's a great program. I was wondering about the realtors who assist you with that. I mean, is there a housing stock that you already know that's available or when people apply, you just kind of just seek out what's available? And are these new homes, older homes?
So generally, the buyer is mortgage-ready and they're typically already working with a mortgage company and they have identified their real estate agent. Once they are approved for funding with us, then they go out with their real estate agent and they find the home that they want. We don't have anything to do with the selection. We allow them to select where they want to stay, what those features are, as long as they're staying under the affordability. So if they're approved for 200,000 or 175,000, they cannot go any higher than that. But they are free to, wherever they can find a property is where they can choose to write the contract on. It's become a little bit difficult because the affordability is an issue. I would tell you that 99% of the clients that we serve are not only receiving our down payment assistance, but we wrote a separate grant through Virginia Housing that we are able to discount the mortgage rate 1% through Spark. And that allows us to give them a little bit more affordability. So either we're layering with our money, there's some other programs through the state, there's a federal home loan. So in nine times out of 10, our buyers are getting two or more different grants or subsidies to make it affordable, that they can stay in the home.
Right. And I saw that the criteria listed income, you know, based criteria, but I know that one of the problems that we have is a lot of persons who have convictions sometimes aren't able to get homes. Have you noticed that?
So that's not the case in homeownership. So if you're able to qualify for a first mortgage, a standard FHA, VA, USDA loan, there are no provisions for that. And that's another key to homeownership. If we can ready people that are entering back into the system from prison and make them mortgage-ready, then homeownership may be a better option.
Absolutely. And then I guess my last question, as the member of council who serves as the liaison to STOP, Inc., I know that they formed a CDC, so I just wanted to know if they would qualify under the CHODO program.
Well, CDC is separate than a CHODO. STOP was doing some work in the non-entitlement areas out in, they were out in, I believe, Southampton County, Franklin and some of the underlines. So I'm not sure what their development process is internally.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
The allocation for this current year, do we know how much of that has been used?
You mean the one that he's presenting today?
Right, the home projects. There was two, the current funding was 220,000.
For our FY '23?
Right.
Okay, not the new, okay. I would probably, I don't have that number, but generally, we spend our whole allocation in that year. Again, as Jeff alluded, projects go from fiscal year to fiscal year. So even if we have money that was allocated in May and June, if we close it in July, it's still technically the following year. Homeownership month is June, so generally, the bulk of our funding, this is our hot season. Tax returns, New Year's resolutions, children getting out of school. So from this point to the end of the year is when we pretty much go through the allocation for our funding. So if you all have any extra, we're willing to take it.
Ms. Bethia and Ms. Garrett, thank you for all the work you do to help people realize the American dream. Also, thank you for the work you do at the regional level. We're having some real good discussions on how to make homeownership more attainable to our community. So thank you.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next presenter this evening is Ms. Deanna Valentine, who is the Director of Social Services for the city of Portsmouth. Ms. Valentine will present an overview of the real estate tax relief program. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Glover. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, council members, citizens, city attorney and deputy city clerk. I think I have everyone covered at this point. My name is Deanna Valentine and I am the director. I serve as the Director of Social Services here for the city of Portsmouth. And hopefully, I will not mess up the presentation here. So to begin, one of the first questions that sometimes people are a little bit uncertain of is, what exactly is tax relief and what does that program look like here in the city of Portsmouth? So the goal of the tax relief program... Shall I continue? The goal of the, oh, right. The goal of the tax relief program is either to reduce or to freeze the real estate liability for elderly and disabled homeowners. And when we say what that liability is, that just means the amount that people owe in regards to their taxes. There are two different forms of relief that people are able to apply for and may be eligible for. The first is tax exemption. So the exemption means that you can get a reduction in the amount of the taxes that you owe, your liability. That can range from anywhere from 10% to 100%, meaning that if you qualify, if your income levels and asset levels are what they need to be, then you may not have any tax liability that you owe the city. And we'll discuss that more further. The reduction is shown on the first quarter bill. And the first quarter bill usually comes out sometime in August to be due in September, I believe is correct. Tax freeze is different from tax exemption in that the real estate taxes are frozen at the prior year's tax rate. So regardless of whether or not there's an increase in the tax rate or the assessment of the home, that tax rate that you're paying will remain the same. So there won't be any increase. Who is eligible? So applicants must be 65 of years of age or older or must be permanently and totally disabled as of June 30th, 2023, or prior year June 30th. Applicants must also be the full owner or partial owner of the property that they're claiming an exemption on and must be living in the home. That is a key component. Lastly, applicants must not have disposed of assets to their future heirs within the preceding five years. Income and asset limits. As with most of the programs that both DSS happens to administer, this one is no different. When you look at asset limits and income, the income limit for exemption means that someone's annual household income has to be $30,000 a year or less. When you're looking at the financial asset limit, that means it must not exceed $75,000 a year. Now, this does exclude the value of the home and the property that the home sits on up to one acre. So as you see the piggy bank, you see the car on the side, so that's more of an asset as opposed to just the home. Income and asset limits, freeze. So the freeze component is different than the initial exemption where you can actually not have any liability. As we discussed earlier, the definition of freeze means that you're frozen at whatever the prior year's rate is. The income limit for freeze is $30,001 to $67,000 per year for that household. Likewise, the financial asset limit is $75,001 to $350,000. Why should you apply? So this slide may be one of the most important of everything that I may say tonight. This may be what actually will come home to people because it actually relates to the money that's in your pocket or not in your pocket. So tax liability is based on assessments and rates. And an increase to either will be an increase in your tax liability or the amount of money that you would owe. So in the very first example, you see that the exemption, the real estate tax liability for the '23, '24 year would be $2,494.12. If that person's income for that year is $26,999 and that's social security income, if their resources are $56,000, and those are just some examples of the resources that they may have, life insurance, cash value and vehicles or what have you, their tax relief qualifies that individual for an exemption. So they will not owe, instead of owing that $2,494, they're not owing anything to the city because they have that exemption. They've qualified for that exemption. And the second example of the freeze, you can see where the person is over the income level for an exemption and so therefore, then they would be evaluated automatically for the freeze component. The income for 2022 for this particular person was $55,000. That includes both social security income and pension income. Their resources and assets were $250,000, of course, liquid life insurance, these are just examples, cash value of vehicles. And then they were eligible for a prior year's tax freeze. So this person, instead of them paying an increased rate, so if the rates increase, the tax rate increase, or if the assessment on their home increased, instead of them paying that for this year at this year's rate, they would pay the prior year's rates. How do I apply? Applications are accepted January 3rd through April 30th. I do believe that there is also, not I believe, I know that there is the ability to have an exception to that, to have applications accepted past that deadline at the city manager's request. Where can you apply for applications? Where can you pick up applications? Where can you apply? Of course, at my office at Social Services, 1701 High Street. And that's available 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Applications are also available, paper applications are available at the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office, City Treasurer, City Hall, and all Portsmouth libraries. And I am very excited to say that we are currently working with IT to be able to develop an additional, slightly easier platform in being able, for allow people to be able to apply online. So we are very excited about that. And just please understand that that does not exclude people from being able to apply on paper. I am cognizant and understand that sometimes people are not necessarily tech-savvy and so that we can still accept paper applications, but that this would also allow for people to not have to travel to Social Services or anything along those lines to be able to apply for this benefit. Information needed to apply. So there are, of course, documents that needed to be gathered in order to complete the application process. And the great staff at Social Services is able to assist people with getting that documentation and walking them through the process. Any income that that person receives or that household receives is required. That can include, and you can see the list, I won't read all of those for you, but of course, pensions, annuities, if you have any W-2, earned income, wages, anything, TANF, any of those things would be necessary. Also, a power of attorney, if there is one that is in existence, if you're representing or applying for someone on their behalf. Of course, a copy of the most recent tax bill is very helpful. Any bank or credit union statements with the end-of-the-year balance. And so it's really important that we make sure that we have that end-of-the-year, the previous year balance. So if you're applying for 2023, you need to make sure that you have the 2022 ending-year balance. Likewise, the end-of-year statements for all investments that are partially or solely owned, that includes CDs, IRAs, 401Ks, et cetera. Then lastly, the year make and model of any automobiles that are owned, because that contributes to those assets as opposed to the home. That was short and simple and to the point. I would be happy to entertain any questions. And if there's anything specific that I may not be able to answer, I've also brought my chief of benefits that can answer any specific processing questions for you.
Ms. Valentine, thank you for that presentation. And Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
This is for the city manager. Did you present to us, it was a spreadsheet comparing the criteria for other cities when it comes to... it comes to income limits and financial assets?
Yes, sir. The previous council, we changed the criteria through ordinance last year to allow more people to qualify for the program.
Can you resend that again so we can have that for information?
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Valentine, for the presentation. I think this is some great information that a lot of our citizens may not know about. So do you anticipate that you may have a large number of citizens who may be applying for this relief?
Well, yes, ma'am. Every year, there seems to be a lot of citizens that come and apply, and we see people daily that are coming to apply, which is one of the reasons that we're hoping to be able to roll this out in online platforms so that even more people might be able to apply. We don't want to create any barriers when we're looking at people applying for some sort of assistance that might be able to help them. And so we definitely know that it's a need in the community, especially for our able, our elderly and disabled population.
Correct. And I guess that the requirement for the age of 65, so if there's a husband and a wife, they both have to meet the combined qualifications?
If they both own the property. So, yes, ma'am.
Right, yes. Okay. And thank you for being the resource for Stop Inc. I know they recently had a community needs assessment program at Stop yesterday, and this would have been good information also for, to be presented to, for the community needs assessment. So thank you for your willingness to allow them to use Department of Social Services enforcement for that platform.
Yes, ma'am. Always able to have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Valentine. Madam Manager, you had a comment you wanted to make, and the next person after you will be Councilman Moody.
Yes, I just wanted to also make the comment that we do see the disabled veterans that have, that usually come with an exemption status if they're 100% disabled. Can you just mention that?
Yes, absolutely. And so for people to qualify if they happen to be disabled, that some of that same information that I mentioned earlier is also required, but then also there's a requirement for documentation from the doctors that we can also assist if someone needs help in retaining that information.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice presentation, Ms. Valentine. Thanks. Question on page, well, yeah, page six, under the income limits for the freeze and the financial asset limits. On the freeze, it says $30,001 to $67,000. So that puzzles me that, okay, we're talking about a freeze because someone's income is putting a hardship on them. So does that mean someone making $29,000 wouldn't qualify?
That means they wouldn't qualify for freeze, but if you look on the prior slide, $30,000 or less would be that they would qualify for the exemption. So the exemption is $30,000.
Okay, so it's true the freeze, they would go to the exemption.
Exactly, exactly.
And on the asset limit, I was going to have basically the same question. If you, $75,001 to $350,000, so if it was less than 75, they wouldn't qualify?
Then they, again, would qualify for the exemption piece if the income was also $30,000 or less.
Okay, I got you.
And it's the same for that financial asset limit, even though I just didn't put the asterisk there, it's the same thing for the home that is also excluded as well, and that property up to an acre.
Have we seen an increase in people applying for the freeze or exemption?
I would say yes, I think. And then, of course, after this presentation, then people likely will also start to apply as well, so.
Yeah.
Which is, of course, that's important, and so that's what we're there for, to be able to assist.
How do we communicate that? I know it's on our website, and obviously people will see this presentation, but day in, day out, how's that? Do we make people aware through other mediums?
Yes, actually. So anyone that was previously approved for either the exemption or the freeze, the following year, they receive a certification form in the mail. So kind of as a reminder, but then also it's an abbreviated form so that they can apply with a little bit less information. One of the things that we can also do is to make sure that we're marketing it with Peter Gligola, so that it's one of the kind of PSAs, gets out to Port City, and is on our, all of our web, our web-based social media and what have you as well, especially with the updated information, and hopefully soon that online platform to be able to apply as well.
Very good. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Councilman Hugo, then Dr. Whitaker.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Valentine, thanks for the presentation. You just answered one of my questions. The other question, can you tell me what percentage of our households are exempt and what percentage are frozen?
I cannot tell you that, but I can get that information for you. But I can check. Would you know that information? We can certainly get that information to you. You want the percentage of households that are frozen and the percentage that are exempt?
Currently, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Ms. Valentine, a citizen asked me this question. That is, we have a lot of citizens who are taking care of their elderly parent, and so if that citizen owns a house, but they are staying with their elderly parent to help assist them, does that count as household income for the elderly parent if the child is staying there assisting them?
Are they staying there temporarily?
Well...
And what I might would suggest even is for you and I to maybe have a more in-depth conversation so that we're not providing that person's, you know, personal information during this forum, but it could potentially be that if that person is staying there temporarily and truly does have their own home, then they're not part of the household.
Okay. And do we have in the city a definition of what temporary means?
That is not in the ordinance. There are lots of things in the ordinance, so I would need to speak with the city attorney to see if there's anything that needs to be amended in regards to that.
Okay.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Interim city manager, would you like to make a comment at this time? Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and we will govern ourselves accordingly. We were going to bring forth a presentation in regards to the proposed safety complex, but in light of the time constraints, I'm asking to postpone that to the next meeting because our city attorney has a presentation for Sugar Hill.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam City Attorney, ma'am, if you would proceed at this time, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, interim city manager. As you all know, I was asked by this council to report back to you all regarding the status of returning property in the Sugar Hill community. I provided council with a written report back, and during my research, I came to know a subject matter expert who is going to come to you to present on the issue of heirs' rights. I want to introduce her first as she comes to the podium. Carla Carter is an attorney, a speaker, a writer, and a dedicated advocate on the issues relating to heirs, property, the need for access to legal services to low-income communities, and the protection of rights as outlined in the prior presentations. I think this is very timely. We talked about home ownership. We've talked about its connection to growing wealth in communities, and she is here to talk about how to preserve that as your, as the generations move on in your family. And then that will lead us to the conclusions that we came to in our update on Sugar Hill. But I want to make sure that Ms. Carter has all the time that she needs to give this excellent presentation to not only council, but to the community that we serve. So without further ado, I will introduce to you Carla Carter, and she's going to discuss understanding heirs' property and its impact on the accumulation of black wealth in America. Thank you.
Welcome, Attorney Carter.
Thank you. Good afternoon to the mayor, the vice mayor, and the honorable members of the city council, to the city attorney, the interim city manager, who's a familiar face, and to the deputy city clerk. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. My name is Carla Carter. I am senior counsel at Dominion Energy. But prior to joining Dominion Energy, I spent 23 years in local government. So I am, I was recently with the City of Suffolk as their deputy city attorney, and I enjoyed 15 beautiful years in Suffolk. So I am very familiar with council chambers and work sessions, and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you very much for your time. So back in 2021, I really, well, I have to take you back to 2020. I attended a real estate seminar and heard some information about black land loss that I'd never heard before in my entire, in my entire life. And it really opened my eyes to how pervasive this issue is in our country, and it started me on a, on a journey of not only researching, but becoming an advocate for helping families stabilize land ownership. So we'll get started. We'll talk about black land, the rise and fall of black land and ownership since, really, let's go back to 1875. Between 1875 and 1910, black land ownership was at 15 million acres by 1910. But between 1910 and 1970, there was a drastic decline, and we went from 15 million acres to five and a half acres, and that number continued to fall. But I'm looking at the window of 1910 to 1970. Why this huge decline? How did we go from this, a place of land ownership and pride in the millions of acres, to less than 5 million acres by 1970? Well, for me, I have to go by, you know, I use tools to help me remember things, but for me, it's the three Bs. It's bullets, it's bugs, and brutality. These three things factored in the land loss in this country because it contributed to the great migration. Specifically, both world wars contributed to a massive exodus from the South because there were jobs up North. People living in the South were sharecroppers, and my presentation, this is a very shortened presentation, I've done a two-hour CLE on this topic, where I really dive into those 40 acres of a mule and what that, the history behind that and what that really is about. I won't touch on that today, but the bottom line is that in the early 1900s, when we were sharecroppers and tending to the land, the bauxite made its introduction into the South around 1914 to 1916. It decimated many crops, so you're already living in a deficit, and then you are, that deficit is compounded by this pest that devastated a lot of crops in the South. Add to that brutality. We know the history. I won't have to go into it here, but those three factors really contributed to over 6 billion people leaving the South and migrating North. So this, this connection from the land, due to various factors, has led to this unique, two black Americans, because black Americans are not the only ones impacted by heirs' property, but it led to 1/3 of blacks own land in the South being, is estimated now to be heirs' property, and it is the leading cause of involuntary land loss in the black community. Not only the African-American community, but this issue impacts other vulnerable communities, including the Native Americans, the Central Appalachian region of the country, as well as in southwest Texas, the colonias. These are areas and examples of people that are struggling with stable land ownership. And the common theme across all of these populations is low-wealth populations that are impacted by this. So heirs' property. Exactly what is it and why has it created such a problem in this country? Well, it's a term to use, it's used to describe land ownership. It's a, that results when property passes without the benefit of a will or an estate plan. Descendants each share a claim to the estate. You have two or more owners, the property is held as tenants in common. You don't have any rights of survivorship. When a co-tenant passes away, their fractional interest passes to their heirs. The more owners you have, the bigger the problem. So with each generation, this gets exponentially more difficult to untangle. You can have hundreds of heirs on a piece of land. It does increase the community impacts, likelihood of family disputes and discord. You have family members, you have one heir that's been paying the taxes for years, they think they have ownership, but that's not true. It's all divided amongst the however many heirs on that property, whether they're paying the taxes or not, whether they live on it or not, whether they're connect, have an actual connection to the land. The title status, it makes, the title status makes it difficult, and I'm sure you all are well aware of the difficulties with identifying owners, enforcing your code ordinances, your code enforcement ordinances, collecting taxes. It's an issue that impacts localities. I remember when I was handling purchases, because I would, I do, my specialty is real estate, so I handled real estate matters for the City of Suffolk, and I've had to do a 1/16 fraction payout when we have been able to identify everyone on a, on a transaction. That was an easy one. They're often not that simple to figure out. It makes it difficult for you to have affordable housing and family stability when you don't have stable land ownership. These are the vulnerabilities. You're ineligible for a lot of programs through the USDA or FEMA grants. You can't use it for a mortgage. A lot of times, that's why you see mobile homes on properties. A lot of times, they don't have access to public utilities. More susceptible to loss due to tax sales. That's a reality. And another thing, they're vulnerable to forced partition sales, and that's one of the biggest threats to land ownership because of the nature of heirs' property. There have been, partition suit abuses have been, have played a large role in black land loss in this country. So as I was mentioning earlier, you could have, you know, your Aunt Jane's been paying the taxes and living on it for years, she thinks, this is my land. But you can have a disinterested third cousin living in New York who gets approached by a developer to say, hey, I'll pay you five grand for your 1/8 interest in the property, and they jump on it. They don't care about the land, they don't have a connection to it. They allow the developer to make this purchase. That then gives that developer standing. See, the developer has the capital and the means and the desire for the land. They have the standing then to bring a suit that will force the sale of the land. And so your aunt may think she's okay, but she may lose her right to live on that land, and as that family is separated from the land. This has happened so many times, and lawyers have played a part in the insidious practice of depriving people of their land. As a legal profession, our hands are not clean. My personal hands are clean, but as a profession, we own a responsibility for what our four practitioners have done in creating this problem. It's generated mistrust in the legal profession from low-wealth communities because who are the, if you come to them and you are, you're saying, oh, I can help you with this, just sign here, and you don't have the education, or you don't have the access to legal resources to even understand what's being put before you, you can understand why this happens. But we do have good news. You know, there is partition reform that has taken place in Virginia and in many other states to make partition harder to, as far as dividing the property, or selling it off, rather, makes it harder for that to be done just right out the gate. There have to be considerations, including the family connection to the land, the ability for other family members to buy out the person who's wanting to sell. It does not, it makes it harder for one person to completely destroy a legacy because they don't have a connection. But this is why we have to have stable land ownership, because you cannot maintain wealth for future generations without it. But how do you get that? You need access to trusted, and I emphasize trusted, legal services. You need access to trusted, and I emphasize trusted, legal services. This is, this statement really resonates with me, and I'll just read a portion of it. The part of the reason why we have such a high incidence of heirs' property in the African-American community is because when African-Americans went from the status of being property themselves to after the Civil War, being able to become landowners, here's the key. Hardly any of them were able to structure their ownership in a way that would be stable. Most of them had no access to attorneys. After the Civil War, you're not going to walk into this white law firm and say, hey, can you help me stabilize my land ownership? You know it wasn't happening. There was no access. You couldn't even get funding. You couldn't go and get a bank, get a loan from the bank. My dad, the property I live on, well, the property we own in the northern neck of Virginia, the house that sits on it was built because a man, a white man vouched for my daddy at the bank and said, he's a good guy, you can loan him the money. He couldn't just walk in there and get that money. That's how he got it. We have this house, this family, enduring family legacy, but it wasn't because he could easily go in and get it himself. So it's important to understand why there is no, there was no culture of estate planning in a lot of low-wealth communities. That was not discussed growing up. That was not a part of our culture, which explains why, for me, I was a, sitting in my law school classroom and said, oh, that property we lived, that I grew up on is an estate? Like, wait, we need a will? It never occurred to me. I'm edu, I was an educated woman. I did not know that because it wasn't a part of my culture. I didn't understand that. We didn't talk about that growing up. My dad didn't graduate from high school. He didn't have access, and he didn't know. He is still the most intelligent man I know. May he rest in peace. So if you look at this chart, for example, college-educated black people, 32% have a will versus 65% of college-educated white people. But if you look at high school, even the high school, 22% of black people with a high school education got a will versus 58% of white people with a high school diploma. So there's a huge will-making gap and disparity in this country that is contributing to this ongoing problem of unstable land ownership. We can talk all day long about how we got here as far as the historical impacts. We have to factor that in as we look at how we serve this community that needs the help. So you have to understand the history, but you also have to kind of understand why we're here and that there is a way out. Access to legal services, access to trusted legal services, to me, is the key. In Virginia, we have over 8.4 million population, and more than 10% of Virginians are living in poverty. So when you have an, at least one legal problem, 54.5% of low-income households experience at least one legal problem, and then only 17% of those can get assistance from a lawyer. Lack of resources. There's not enough, legal aid can't do all the work. Involvement by the private bar in the form of pro bono or reduced fee services is crucial to the success. So right now, what happens if someone has a land issue and they can't afford to, you know, to hire an attorney? They usually, that, that matter usually goes unresolved. That's what's happening. That's what's happening right now. So what does that mean? Because we can talk about the problems, but we need to talk about a way forward and what we're going to do and how we do it. Well, to me, it starts with two things. It's a, it's a track of providing community education, educating our citizenry about heirs' property and what it really is, so they understand the impacts on inaction and start to shift their mindset to estate planning through education and through access to legal services. So I have provided this information to your wonderful city attorney. There are links. The, the first one I'm going to talk about is the Farmland Access Legal Toolkit. This resource, you don't have to be a farmer or have farmland, so don't let that deter you. That website is like a one-stop shop covering 13 different states, heirs' property information. It's an excellent tool for not only landowners, practitioners. You can go there. I was fortunate enough to be able to write, participate in the drafting of the Virginia fact sheet. So there's one for Virginia on there. There's one for 12 other states. So that if you have a cousin in Alabama who calls you and says, look, I need to get some, I want to do something with this land down here, what can I do? There you have a tool to give them. At least send them there to start, okay? Because there's genealogy resources, tax sale resources, everything you need to know that touches heirs' property has been compiled in this one place. I think it's a good start. It's going to give you resources in all the states because there are many, many states doing, providing this type of service, and it's specific to their state. One of note in Virginia, the Black Family Land Trust. They do work serving North Carolina, Virginia, South Carolina. The Center for Heirs' Property Preservation in Atlanta for Georgia. There's a project, Apple Seed. There's a project in, I want to say that's in Louisiana, but there are many. It's all on that first website. So just take advantage of these resources for your constituents. But the goal is to educate our community about what it is and then pair them with willing, trusted attorneys who can help them stabilize their land ownership. There's two parts to this. So the project that I'm working on is training for lawyers, but not only on professional competency to handle the many issues, but also to train them to be culturally competent, to understand the population they're serving, to not, to not just write someone off because they're, don't want to work with you, or they have fears, or they have these wrong ideas about what land ownership is. It's because they haven't been educated. So let's educate, and then let's connect them with resources that can help them. So I'll be working with your wonderful city attorney on any outreach. I'm available as a resource for outreach for your community to bring this very important information to your citizenry and so that we can not forget our past, but let's deal with the now and let's do some things to help move the needle towards stable land ownership. And I have a few things you could, I've also sent her the links to this. There's an excellent video about African-American land loss and heirs' property. There's an excellent article, Acres of Distrust: The Lawyer's Role in So-Insuspicion Among Americans, and how lawyers can help curb black land loss. And that really speaks to the role attorneys have played in the past and what they can do in the future. And I have an article that I sent her that I wrote about answering the call for cultural competency in the legal profession. So I'm very thankful that I had the opportunity to be here with you tonight, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
First of all, Attorney Carter, I want to say on behalf of our citizens and our council, that's the first time I've heard a presentation that detailed about that matter. And I've, I've read the book, The Color of Law, and other, 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 other books, but, but this is very detailed information, and I know that many people will benefit from it, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Thank you very much. I will, I know we only have just a few more minutes before we have to get to main council, but I want to briefly announce to the public what the findings were for Sugar Hill. I just want to remind you, Sugar Hill is one of our his, many, one of the many historic communities that we have in the city of Portsmouth. Sugar Hill was founded in the early 1800s, which is remarkable because you will recall that we were recently freed as slaves very close to that. And so it is a remarkable neighborhood. It's one of the neighborhoods, like many in our, in our city, that found itself subject to development. The Midtown Tunnel rides right along its, I want to say, western end. There's the port that's on its eastern end. It's landlocked by a lot of development. And over the years, water had taken over much of it. There are about nine families that currently still live in that community, that are proud of that community, that have spoken to me and given me oral histories of that community, and they are prideful. And so it was an honor to do this, this report back. You will recall that initially, the assessor came forth to you and, and indicated to you that the city held a number of lots or parcels in that, or in that community. And of those, there were roughly about 75 that the city held. Of those, 12 of those parcels were subject to what we would call tax sales that were questionable. And the reason that those tax sales were questionable is because those tax sales were considered private tax sales. Now, a tax sale is a legal transaction, all tax sales, private or public. The problem with a private tax sale is that you are not likely to get the, the value you would normally get from a public tax sale where you're on the steps of the courthouse and you're bidding with the public, and now they have it online. And so we no longer do private tax sales here in Portsmouth, but 12 of those 75 properties were subject to that. And so we looked very carefully and closely at each of those properties, and we've given an information sheet to our council about that. And that information sheet has been, the, the report back and the information sheet has been made available to the public through our ombudsman. I've given her a copy of that. And of those 12, we looked at everything from the value, how the sale went forth. We, one of our lawyers, I won't reveal who it was, even went into his ancestry.com account to really look at who were these people, and there's wonderful stories about them. And what we figured out was that even if we were to assume that the city had some nefarious intent in doing these private tax sales, what would be required of the city to give that property back? And the first thing is that there's a five-step process, and that was the point of this particular report back, was what would be the process of the city to give it back? And without getting too much in the weeds, I will say that first and foremost, we have to have the authority from the state legislature. We are a Dillon Rule state. We do not currently have a statute that allows us to do that, so that is the first step. We would have to have the state legislature give us that authority. Secondly, we would have to comply with the enactment of that authority, whatever that requirement would be. Establish whatever proof mechanisms. We would then have to go to find the heirs of each and every one of those properties. And that is where I found in my research the most challenging and difficult part of this situation, which is how I came to find Ms. Carter. And as you can see from her presentation, I think that is the most important thing that we can take from this, this presentation today. Council will determine what the next steps are for Sugar Hill, but I cannot stress to you how important it is that when you acquire something like land, and we know as citizens of Portsmouth how difficult, we're landlocked. There's no more land to, to gain for our city. When you get a piece of it, you want to hold on to it. And so I encourage you all, and I will talk with my council members about how we can keep the citizens informed on heirs' rights and how to not have an heirs' right property and have a will and have those things together and, and go into our community with trust and understanding based on the work that Ms. Carter and her team members have on getting that information to us. And lastly, the last step for the, for the return of property would be that the city council would have to comply with the state code, have a public hearing, designate the property accordingly, and then follow whatever enactments are dictated by the state. So that would be the process to give it back. There would also need to be a missed step where we would have to evaluate the property, another technical step in there. But, but nonetheless, I think the heirs' rights issue is the biggest issue of this particular project because we have property that, again, dates back. One of the properties that was a tax sale dated back to the 1800s, the Ellets, who were the first free blacks to even own there. And they would have had hundreds, hundreds of heirs. And although it would be a delight to be able to spend that kind of time, my office is, we had a good time doing this, but I don't know if we could do it for all of those properties. But, so I submit to you, that's our, our report back. We are over time. I will open the floor to any questions or comments that council has at the direction of the presiding officer, of course.
Are there any questions or comments from our colleagues on council? Well, Madam City Attorney, I want to thank you and your team for such an in-depth and informative presentation. And I would encourage all of us to take heed to what Attorney Carter advised, particularly as it comes to heirs and land. It's critically important because it, it does matter at the end of the day. And leaving a legacy is as important as all of those other things that we attempt to do in our lives. So with that, we do have a need for a liaison report. Are there any liaison reports at this time? Seeing none, this public work session is now adjourned. We will reconvene the regular council meeting at 7:10. Thank you.